I'll ask the business manager to note the roll call. Ask that everybody rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Snow.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Most recent addition is on the table in front of you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Would move adoption.
Second. A motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. For dates to remember, and we have a lot of important dates coming up this week. May 22nd tonight is the athletic awards program at seven o'clock at the high school auditorium. Tomorrow, May 23rd is class day beginning at eight AM at the high school auditorium. On Wednesday, May 24th, we have becca laureate at eight PM here in the arena. May 25th is eighth grade promotion at seven PM in the high school auditorium. May 28th is graduation at two PM here in the arena. May 29th is Memorial Day. There is no school. And May 31st is the last day of classes. That is an early release day. June 1st is teacher checkout. And then June 12th and June 26th are the next two school board meetings at five thirty PM here in the instructional planning center in the arena. And of course, on June 12th, we also have the administrator goals meeting at six thirty PM. We have, from June 5th to June 29th is the ESL summer school program from Monday through Thursday from eight to one. And then the summer school nutrition program also begins on June 5th. From June 5th through June 29th, breakfast will be Monday through Thursday from seven forty-five to eight fifteen. Lunch will be Monday through Thursday, eleven to twelve forty-five. The summer nutrition program on June 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, basically the Friday lunch program will be eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five. And there will be lunch program from July 3rd through August 4th, Monday through Friday, eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five. If you need those dates, I refer you to the published agenda where that is all laid out for you. That is the agenda for dates to remember. Next, we have community input for items not on the agenda. Is anybody here to address the board for an item not otherwise on the agenda? I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll move on to conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers. We have one submitted by Sherri Nelson. This is waiver 2017 dash fifty-one for a conference she is attending. Is there any discussion, questions, or action on that waiver? Mr. Hader.
I would make a motion that we approve the waiver and I find that the waiver, the terms of the contract are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest, such that the waiver should be granted.
Second. It's a motion and a second to approve that waiver. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. We now turn to the consent agenda. The superintendent of schools recommends approval of the following. A, board approval of new hires. We have four substitute teachers to be approved. Benita Tate, Jennifer Nelson, Barbara Dietz, and Eric Bliss. We have one contract for board approval from Holly Lathrop, a special ed teacher at the Madison Two-Three Center. We have five resignations for board approval from Lorraine Cleveland at Concessions, Gaylor Muve, an ESL para at the Madison Two-Three Center, Rana Urban at Concessions, Deb Hetle.
Hetley.
Hetley, thank you. Special education para at the Madison Two-Three Center, and Amy Nelson from the TAP program. Item D is consideration and approval of bills, which is in the board packet. And we have one intent to apply for grant funding that has been submitted for approval. Bobby Matthews will be applying on behalf of Destination Imagination to United Way for the United Way grant in the amount of $3,000. That is the consent agenda. Any member can ask a question about an item or ask that it be removed to the new business portion of the agenda.
I'd move approval as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll now turn it over to the superintendent to celebrate successes in the department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Congratulations to our employees of the year that were announced at the employee recognition banquet on Wednesday evening, May 10th. For the classified employees of the year, Tricia Wehrman and Darla Helpcat. Tricia is a paraprofessional and Darla is the administrative assistant for the entire activities department. For professional support service person of the year was Linda Peets from the Washington Four-Five Center where she is the instructional coach. The elementary teacher of the year is Erica Boomsma, fourth grade teacher. Middle school teacher of the year is Sherri Lord from the eighth grade. And the high school teacher of the year is Brandy Fitzgerald. Also, congratulations and best wishes to all of our 2017 retirees. Their names have been lifted up each time that they retired and it was announced earlier. I would say there's young people waiting in the hallway and there are chairs available if they want to come in. They're welcome to. It's certainly not a problem. Okay? Going on with the congratulations to Jessica and Philip Van Deepen on the birth of their daughter Miranda Kate. I had the opportunity to meet little Miranda today. Jessica's the school nurse at the Canada High School. Congratulations to Huron High School's Coral Corko, ESD champion in the long jump. He's won that event two years in a row. And Trent Frankham, ESD champion in the pole vault. And Trent set a new ESD record at fifteen feet, four inches. Congratulations to Landon Clays and Henry Rubish for finishing third in the Flight Two Doubles at the Voice State Tennis Tournament. And then in the, congratulations to Abby and Brady Johnson on the birth of their daughter Emma Mae Johnson. Abby's a first grade teacher. And just announced over the weekend, congratulations to Steve Freiberg, who has been elected South Dakota's Athletic Trainer of the Year. And I will be going down because of commitments Mr. Roder has to state golf. I'll be going down with Steve on Tuesday night, June 7th, where he will be honored on that Tuesday evening at the state conference in Sioux Falls. As far as thank yous, we want to thank the following people who worked so hard to make the employee recognition banquet possible. At the risk of leaving people out, the committees Kelly Christopherson, Mike Redkey, Mike Templet, Carol Tompkins, Heather Rosell, Vicky Davis, Mary Hirschman, Cleela Henson, Diana Nebelsec, Barb Peterson, Thatcher Dramstad, the banquet N.C.s, and those who served on the employee of the year committee. Thanks also to all those who attended. Very, very large banquet. And with the restructure this year, I think it was highly successful. Thank you to Heather C. for organizing the middle school career day, which was held May 17. And to Huron middle school students, thank you from Mr. Templet for wearing red to honor the 153rd. And the picture at the flagpole was something that was quite memorable during the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn reports to the board. We have a lot of students in the audience today, which is great to see you all here. Welcome to our school board meeting. So we look forward to hearing about your presentations. Our first is the good news report from Carrie Hinker, director of our ESL program.
I think that's on. Okay. Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight to present a little bit about the ESL program. One of the areas in ESL that I like to highlight in the community when I do presentations is talking about participation of our ESL students. So as you look in our sports, we have ESL students participating. We have ESL students in music, oral debate, or oral interpen debate, drama. They participate in everything. And one of the programs that we're going to talk about tonight is Destination Imagination. So I will have you guys come on up so you can introduce yourself. And this is a little twist on participation. You'll notice as these students come up, they're not all ESL, obviously. And that's what makes me proud of our student body in Huron. Our student body has embraced diversity, and they have learned to collaborate together to become strong and powerful. And this is one of the teams that's going to go to globals and represent the school district. And again, just shows the diversity and how great that can be. So I will let each of you introduce yourself. We'll first start with our two ESL teachers at the middle school, and these are our DI facilitators.
Thanks for having us. I'm Bobby Matthews, the program, one of the program coordinators for DI here in town. And this is our middle school team. It's a mix of grade levels, but we are very excited to travel. We leave in the morning, so lots of excitement and nerves, I think, going on.
And homework. I'm Colleen Jensen, and I love being with this group. One of the highlights for this year is that we have so many parents that have been so supportive and involved. And that just makes everything so much better. So thank you to all of the parents of these wonderful kids.
I'm Ryan Kruger. I enjoy DI because all ideas matter. I joined DI because some of my friends were in it, and I enjoy it now.
My name is Maria Sanchez, and this year I've been very happy to be in DI because we made it to globals and we work so hard. And I'm very happy to, on what we've accomplished this year.
My name is Raquel Sanchez, and one of the things I enjoy about DI is making all of our props in our costumes because they're very cool. And we have a mix of ideas, so it's even better.
My name is Katherine Ayala. I enjoy DI because it helps us develop real world skills further into what we learn in school already. It helps us develop it further.
My name is Sophia Smith. I really enjoy DI because like, there's like different cultures here. We always just learn new different things with each other. It's really fun to experience with each other.
The challenge that they are participating in, or that they have been participating in, is the middle level one. And what they had to do is they had to choose a...
Community outreach.
Thank you. A real world problem or a real world need. Couldn't think of a way to phrase that. And what they chose to address was making sure that all students that come into our middle school feel welcomed. Not just ESL kids, but any kids that move in. And so they worked with the administration and they're in the process of creating a international friendship club, kind of bringing down the international club from the high school to the middle school level, just so that they can greet new students and help them to become, or feel like they're welcome, just to address one of the goals we have at the middle school. So we were pretty excited about that.
And they've done a great job. They've done the... The challenge required that it had, had to have some sort of a fable within their presentation. And so their team name is A-Fable-ing. And they picked different characters, birds and animals from their own cultures. And then literally wove it together to create one, one beautiful picture. And they're starting this out. They're going to have flyers up and they're all ready to go for this next fall.
So to go with our presentation a little bit tonight, they have decided to challenge the board, if you guys would be interested. We did this a few years ago, but they decided there were some new members here. So they want to challenge you guys to an instant challenge of sorts, where you would be building a tower, I believe, is what the challenge is tonight. So they would participate, and then you guys would have your own little team. And, and we would compete against each other and just judge and give you an idea of what they have to do with instant challenge. One of the areas with... Yeah, it's, it's a short one. It's not very long, so.
Are you, are you willing to take the challenge?
I don't think we can refuse.
You guys can go back to the table back there.
So you are being given a bag of materials. When we go to a competition, they work on this long-term project, which is their international club. But then on their feet, in a moment on that day, it is scheduled for them to do what's called an instant challenge. They have around six to eight minutes to look at a challenge, to solve it as a team, and that's what we're challenging the board to. So your challenge is a task to create a freestanding tower to support a ping pong ball. And on the top, it's as narrow as possible where you place that ping pong ball. You will have up to six minutes to create your tower. And on the table, or in that little sack, are your materials for your tower. You'll build your tower on the table so it'll have support, and also so that it supports that ping pong ball. The base of the tower must be at least 12 inches. You will receive points based on how narrow the place where the ping pong ball is supported. And the ping pong ball must be supported at least three inches above the table. You'll get a copy of this. Materials: three chenille sticks, four mailing labels, four straws, three paper clips, two index cards, one ping pong ball, and a plastic bag. The mailing labels may not be attached to the table. You will receive 10 points if your tower is at least 12 inches tall, or wide at the base, and holds a ping pong ball at least three inches from the table. Your points will be based on how narrow the tower is where it supports the ping pong ball. You'll get 10 points if it's less than six inches. You'll get 20 points if it's less than four inches. You'll get 30 points if it's less than two inches, and 40 points if less than one inch. Up to 30 points for the creativity of your tower, and 20 points for how well your team works together. So Mrs. Matthews will time you. They're competing. All right, are we ready?
Your time begins now.
Now.
10 points, it's at least 12 inches.
One minute remaining.
Stick the paper clips through the card.
30 seconds remaining. We do get points for creativity. 15 seconds. That is time. Please step away from your tower.
Guess what? The school board beat the team. Look like it's all fun and games, but all of the challenges are aligned to the common core standards, all of the fine art standards. And so we are really excited about them being able to hone their skills in that arena. Parents, did you want to say something real quick, or you're cool? You do, okay?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity you have here. My name is Alberto Ayala. I'm father of Katherine. One of the things that I've been learning with this team for the many meetings we've been in with them at school, it seems like they don't have a support, like money support from whatever they do at school. I see that there is support for sports and all that kind of stuff. But these guys, they have to work to get their own money for everything that they do, even to use the bus to go to the competitions. They have to pay for it. We've been working with them, doing a lot of things to raise money for them to go, which I think is what our responsibility is for the education of our kids. But I see there is a lot of things that, I don't know who does the help for the other activities. It's money that goes towards them. And we think with all the creation, the activities that these guys do, it should be great that they can have some sort of help economically from whoever helped the other activities at school. And I don't know who's in charge of that. I don't know how this works. But if, if you guys are in charge of these, or it's there that we can do to work together and help them more because like, for them to go to globals, they've been working and raising money when they can be focused on working what they're going to do out there so they can bring the first place. I understand that they compete with like 15 different countries. And being the first-class world that this country is, not having a first place appear, I think we should be embarrassed of it. And with the many times they've been on globals, Huron should have a first place by now. And, but they've been worried about money instead of be focused on, on the challenge they have to do. I don't know how you guys come out with this. I, I see they were doing out there the same thing, but they were having a little issue there. And it, it seems to be fun. They keep them busy, keep their mind focused on something. They have to work under budget, like they said. It's for things that they will help forward in their life. And when they start their own family, they're going to have a budget to work in their family. And that's what they've been doing with their team, with the money that they have to make everything happen for their costumes and everything. So if it's any help that they can get from the school board, that'll be really appreciated. And if we have to work with them to help on that, we will do it too. But I think whatever help they can give from anybody will help them more. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything, any other questions you have, or?
No, I would just say that we, on the board, we always enjoy when DI is here and showing us all the different skills that they work on creatively, both long-term and short-term, quick thinking skills. It's always a great program, and we are going through our budgeting process now. And so maybe there's a way we can find some, some way to work something in there. I know that we, DI has been relatively new in terms of a program. Became a club just maybe three, four years ago. And so it's, it's six, I'm getting to six years ago now. Okay, well, that's good. And it's glad, I'm glad that it's been growing so well, and I've been to some of the competitions. And it's always a great time to see the kids being so passionate about, about their creativity and their program and what they want to see accomplished. So, thank you. And, and on top of that, the fact that this is actually coming to us as part of the ESL program report just shows how much that creativity brings everybody together and is a great, a great support for... and is a great, a great support for bringing children from different cultures. As they mentioned, seeing all the different cultures work together and coming together to solve a common problem. That's great. Thank you very much. With that, we will now move to our next report to the board. This is from Laura Peterson and Teresa Smith on the National American Choral Directors Association Convention.
Get our technology up and running here and then we should be good to go. Teresa Smith and I attended the American Choral Directors National Convention and it's kind of a misnomer to call it national, it's really kind of an international convention. And so I'm just gonna talk about the scope of it and what we went through, what we saw, what we learned, what we did. And then Teresa actually has a live demonstration of what she's been putting into action with her students already this year. So at ACDA, there was fifteen thousand of us music geeks that were in Minneapolis in some form, whether you were a teacher of some kind or whether you were a performer. There was five thousand registered attendees and we got to take in some incredible halls, if you've ever been to Orchestra Hall in Minneapolis. Even the convention center is massive, there was an auto show there at the same time that we were there and they had one part of the convention and center and we had another part. So it was really a large, large venue. The choirs that we listened to, I'll talk more about the number of choirs that we listened to, but we saw everything from children's choirs, middle school, high school, professional choirs. And the exhibit hall itself was massive, there was a hundred and fifty different vendors that just talked music and not general music ideas so much, but choral music. It was very specific to what we did. So we were there Wednesday through Saturday and we took in, I kind of bullet pointed a lot of stuff, but we took in fifteen hours of concerts. We watched two documentaries, reading sessions. We went to different sections, different sessions on techniques, conducting techniques or rehearsal techniques. We went to a really cool session, we kind of stumbled into it. That was about, it was done by a barbershop chorus, it was the second-place international winners. But they talked about male choirs and how that brings intergenerational goodwill and all these awesome things. We saw fantastic performance of Carmina Barana with the Orchestra Hall, at Orchestra Hall. The big superstar of the weekend was Eric Whitaker and if you're a choral person at all, you know who Eric Whitaker is. And he's kind of the big choral rock star, so he was there for the weekend in all of his glory. And if you've ever seen on TV Saint Olaf, this is broadcast every Christmas, if you've ever taken in the Saint Olaf Christmas Festival on TV, I've never been there personally. But the entire Saint Olaf Music Department, their orchestra and all their choirs, their directors, the whole thing came up in about seven buses and recreated the whole event for all of us music teachers at Orchestra Hall. It was beyond amazing. Teresa's gonna talk to you about Del Crows Eurythmics. We saw a demonstration by Winger Corporation, it was really cool, we couldn't afford it at all, but it was neat. But they can transform any room into a digitally acoustic room. So at the push of a button, any room, any space can be any kind of acoustical venue you want it to be. It can be a hall, it can be a cathedral, it can be anything. So we took in that demonstration. One of the neat things that we were able to do is actually engage with these vendors one-on-one and so we got to ask a lot of questions out of a lot of vendors that we use and call on by phone or internet all the time. And so we got to ask a ton of questions. I got to talk a lot of digital music with a company called Music Notes and we got to ask a lot of digital music questions since we have our iPads at the high school. And the schedule was, the schedule was quite brutal. We went from eight AM to about ten PM or later. And I put Uber up there because it was pretty cold. And so our hotel was, we navigated the world in skywalks and so we were probably six, seven blocks away. The last concert at Saturday night was done, it was probably ten-thirty or almost closer to eleven by the time it was done. And the skywalks, if you don't know downtown Minneapolis, the skywalks close at eight. So we, Teresa and I got to have our very first Uber experience. So we called an Uber driver and he took us back to our hotel so we didn't have to walk the streets of Minneapolis in the dark. Then the convention was all wrapped in this fantastic app. They had an app that was specific to the convention. So you could map out what you were gonna do, you could build a schedule, you could, there was maps of all the venues. You could, it had kind of a Facebook-like interface so you could interact with people at the convention, you could like things that they posted, you could share pictures, you could say, hey, I was just here and this group was performing and you should all get here. And that was a really cool aspect of the convention as well. I'm gonna just kind of blanket talk about, I say what we learned, this is me. The fourteen hours of concerts are the bulk of what we do and it's really for the choir director, it's really a listening lab. It's for, it's for me to get out and listen to what other people are doing. And when you do what I do, you don't have the opportunity to hear what other groups do, especially the caliber of the groups that were there. These are really the best of the best of the best in the country and in the world, quite honestly. So then you get to listen to what is their sound, what do they do, what is their technique, what are the choices of repertoire that they're doing, how do they do that? What's the artistry of what they're doing, how do they interpret what's happening? One of the biggest things for me that came across was I was so impressed on how many choral groups used movement and I thought, gosh, I just don't do that enough. I mean, it's one thing to do pops and do choreography, but just in general choral singing, there was a lot more movement at this convention that really helped convey the story and I was really impressed. So for me, I got to sit and kind of match up what I was doing against what they were doing. What works for them, what are they doing, what could I be doing differently? How can I inspire my kids, how can I motivate my kids? And for me, it helps me shoot for a higher bar every time I go to these things and you return a better teacher for sure. And then I am gonna turn this over to Ms. Teresa.
Excellent, I'll talk to you about the Del Crows Eurythmics. That was a workshop that we went to one morning. And basically what that is, he was a Swiss composer and this program that he developed was developed in the early twentieth century and it focuses on combining physical movement using your body as a way of expressing and learning about music. It can be used in preschool, kindergarten, elementary, all the way up to adults can use this system. So it combines rhythm and structure and musicianship through movement. And so, is there another slide to go with this?
Yes.
Yeah, just the definition of the term, Eurythmics.
It's gonna go, I promise.
Just means good rhythm. So like Laura said, you know, these choirs that were using rhythm, it wasn't so much just choreography as they were moving and feeling that music. So it involves the whole body, teaches the students to remember activities and feelings that will become especially useful later when they move on to singing and playing. And in my seventh grade choir, we worked a lot with elongating phrases and not taking breaths in the wrong places and so that was all done through movement, that was a fun activity. These kids are going to demonstrate for us one of the activities that we combine movement with solfège, which is the do, re, mi that everybody's familiar with, and just some good concentration technique. So I've done this with my choir since we've been home and I have a mixture here of seventh and eighth graders, so we're gonna give this a shot. Normally in my room, I have the solfège syllables posted and that really helps them. They're, they watch those because we need a little reminder. So I did print that, if you girls want to come up here and split up into your two groups and we'll just kind of sing for whoever, you can face over that way and I'll come help you. You want to be on a team?
Sure. I can do this, whose team am I on?
Why don't you be over here, Mrs. Peterson? You be over here, yeah? Are we a circle? And I'll kind of, we're kind of a circle, do you guys need this? I wonder if I just set them on the floor if you get stuck with your syllables, okay? And so we're gonna do one all together first. So the first thing that we do is we just get a, am I in a bad place?
No, do we need a mic though?
Studio, do we need a mic?
Sorry.
Once you move away from the podium, it pretty much stops picking up anything, so yeah.
Am I on now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the first thing that we'll do is just get a four pattern going. So one is always down in front, so it's one, two, three, four. So we keep that pattern going, we're gonna do this all together. And so it's, we're going to build on the scale. So we'll just start on do and then we'll build all the way up to high do. So if we start here, one, two, ready on do, do, two.
Do, re. Do, re, mi. Do, re, mi fa. Do, re, mi fa so. Do, re, mi fa so la. Do, re, mi fa so la ti. Do, re, mi fa so la ti do. Do, re, mi fa so la ti do. Do, re, mi fa so la ti. Do, re, mi fa so la. Do, re, mi fa so. Do, re, mi fa. Do, re, mi. Do, re. Do.
Good, now I'm gonna have this team over here start, ready, two. You guys are gonna start and we're gonna come in two beats later with our own count one. So now we just have to, we really have to concentrate. Is Jasmine gonna do this too?
I've done it before.
We've done this too. Okay, so you guys are gonna start, we're gonna come in two beats later, okay? Here we go, one, two, ready and...
Do. Do. Do, re. Do, re. Do, re, mi. Do, re, mi. Do, re, mi fa. Do, re, mi fa. Do, re, mi fa so. Do, re, mi fa so. Do, re, mi fa so. Do, re, mi fa so la. Do, re, mi fa so la ti fa. Do, re, ti fa so la ti do. Do, re, ti fa so la ti do. Do, re, mi fa so la ti fa. Do, re, mi fa so la. Do, re, mi fa so. Do, re, mi fa. Do, re, mi fa. Do, re, mi. Do, re, mi. Do, re. Do, re. Do. Do.
Good job. So we can split that up into four different groups and then we can also incorporate walking and stepping to the beat to keep that all separate. So you can kind of see how the singing and the movement are connected and just help to make them stronger musicians. So there's oodles of activities that you can do, but this was a quick one that we could show you tonight and it was a really interesting program, so one that just had a lot of good hands-on things to bring with us. Thank you, ladies.
I think so.
That was, that's basically in a nutshell the four days of massive choral geekiness that happened to us. And so we learned oodles more than we could, we could stand here all day and talk to you about all the stuff we learned, but...
Thank you for the opportunity to go though, it was incredible.
Yes, by far.
I hope I get to go again.
Questions for us on any of that? I know you all want to learn how to do that, how we could, we'll save that for the next.
If I may, as someone who got to experience the lovely Mrs. Peterson teaching us to do that a few days after she got back, I will say two things. One, they make it look a lot easier than it actually is when you're in a room of ninety children walking around and doing it at the same time. And also it's just, it was really a wonderful teaching experience when she came back and showed us. So I do hope that they get to go again.
Thank you.
Well, if there are no other questions, anything, thank you very much for that report.
Thanks, Gil.
Thank you. And then I have one more, I'll just continue to stay here.
So you're also presenting on the HHS TriM Music Honor Society?
Yes, sir. And I have some children with me and an adult with me, come on up, Lori. Hi. And we'll try and move quickly through this too as well. I wanted to make sure we presented one because I thought the project was awesome and I really wanted you to hear about it. But the other reason why I really wanted to present tonight is you may not be aware that we actually have a music honors society. And we chartered that about two or three years ago and we've only been starting to put legs to it within the last year, year and a half or so. And so I wanted to, I thought, oh, this is a good time to kind of present and say, yes, we exist and this is what we're doing. It's similar to a national honors society where the kids have to apply and they are selected based on their academics and their character and then their musicianship. And so they go through an application process and then the kids work throughout the year to find a project. And our project, this kind of, as I was thinking about, what could we do, what could we take on? Because NHS and many of the clubs at the high school have aligned themselves with certain organizations and I thought, well, what could we take on and what could we do that would be musical? Apart from just going places and singing and going someplace and playing. Not that that's not important, but I wanted to do something a bit more significant. And so I ran across on Facebook of a little bit of information about music and Alzheimer's and I thought, well, this is very interesting. If you don't know a lot about Alzheimer's, I have it up there as far as what type of a disease there it is. It's progressive, there is no cure. I think almost everybody in the room to some degree has some sort of Alzheimer's connection or knows somebody who has a family member that is struggling with that and so it's something a lot of us deal with and struggle with. And then I also ran across the music connection part of it. There was a thing on Facebook that I read about how music really can get to the core of Alzheimer's and can almost bring patients back, if I can say it that way. Alzheimer's, and Lori can speak to this so much more than I can, but the way I understand it is Alzheimer's shuts down cognitive, it impairs cognitive thinking. And music that is memorized slides past that. And so people that struggle with names or places can still remember things and still remember music selections and have them memorized. And so I thought, this is cool, we should jump on board with this. Do you want to jump in? You, I, you're kind of nodding like you want to get in here.
Lori, while you're getting started, students, if you'd slide that way, I'm having a hard time getting all of you on the monitor.
Or come around to this way.
There we go.
Are you got him? Okay.
Go, Lori, you're doing great.
You know, I think we've always known that music has been beneficial to Alzheimer's residents and that it can, it can, it can bring back memories that they might forget names and whatnot, but music does stimulate them enough to remember songs. But we've, just in the past couple of years, the research has shown that individualizing that music, we've kind of always done overall music, have a band come in or a group come in and they do seem to respond to that. But just now in the last couple of years, individualizing that music has really been showing some great results, so. And we'll, we'll bring her back because she's gonna talk more about that. So I presented that idea to the TriM kids and I said, what do you think? Should we take this on, could we do something with Alzheimer's? Could we partner somehow, could we partner with a nursing home and do some kind of project? What would it look like and what, more importantly to us, were the results? I had an awesome group of kids and I won't read them, I'm just gonna list them. But I had, all of these kids were absolutely thrilled to take this project on and I have told them many times, it's probably the third time you guys have heard this. I know as a high school kid, I would have been terrified to do this project, to, to partner with a nursing home and to visit with Alzheimer's patients and, and to really get in there and get a little dirty with this particular project. I think that would have made me very nervous. And they were all really great about, yes, let's do this, this sounds incredible, what would happen if we did this. So we did partner with Sunquest and I talked to Lori about the project that we wanted to partner with them and do something with Alzheimer's. And I talked to them about, I talked to her about something I had seen in Facebook where another TriM organization provided MP3 players to specific patients. The MP3 players would be loaded specifically with music that connected to that individual, not just general music, but something that would really touch that individual. And so I said, what do you think of this, could we do this? And she said, yes, and so we thought we would kind of try out about ten patients and see how that would work. And so now our goal for the year was to provide an MP3 player loaded specifically for those residents. So it was really cute when we got there. So it was really cute. When we got there the first day, they had rooms set up for us and they had music therapy room on it. I thought, well, that's, makes us sound so official. Um, Lori and Tammy came in and did some training with us ahead of time, talked to us a little bit about what Alzheimer's was, showed us some videos, talked to us about, um, what we would kind of, how we would move forward a little bit. The kids raised money through, I had some Triumph kids help me ra, um, organize our singing Valentine's, so when we did that project, we took that money and that went to the purchase of our MP3 players. Um, the nursing homes selected ten residents and we set up interview schedules and away we went. And I had no idea how this was gonna go or even what to do at all. And I, I'd like to stand up here as the professional, but I'm, I'm really not because I thought, all right, kids, let's figure this out. So I have one more slide about today, but do you wanna talk about, any of you wanna talk about like your first interviews or what happened? Jump, jump up here.
So Haley and I had this resident who, she really didn't talk at all. She couldn't really remember anything. The first day we went, she wasn't very responsive to anything. She would say no and we couldn't really get much out of her. And then, so we just kept trying and playing music and we found the song, "New York, New York" by Frank Sinatra and she seemed to perk up about that. And we went a couple more times and we still didn't get very much out of it. And then we went Saturday. And she, we played "New York, New York" first and she just talked the entire way through and which, and some people that were working came in and talked to us and they said that they've really never seen her talk very much. She always sleeps throughout the day, so we were pretty excited about that.
Yeah, she was smiling and laughing with us and she, she was talking a lot more than we'd ever gotten out of her, so we got a lot of different songs that she liked.
Okay, so my sister and I went, we had a lady who, basically like she could remember some things, but she couldn't remember like who her husband was or different stuff like that. She could remember like her childhood, but not anything past that. So we like asked about different things and her caretaker said, well, maybe she would like some songs from Daniel O'Donnell because he's Irish and she's Irish and, you know, stuff like that. So we played some of those songs for her and she just started singing along to all of them. She knew all the words. So then we started playing some patriotic songs since her husband was in the war. So we played, um, "America the Beautiful" and she knew every verse to that and she just was singing and like actually responding to us. And then after that, she started talking more about like what other songs she liked and that she liked hymns and stuff like that and.
And polkas.
Polkas. She went to a lot of dances, so it was really fun. After she perked up to like talk to her and get a lot of different song suggestions for her. And then this morning we, or after school, we went and actually like gave her the MP3. And she didn't really know who we were when we first walked up to her and then we gave her the music and she just smiled and she was singing along and it was really fun to see that, that she's gonna be like that for a while now, so.
All right, so I was with Caleb Schoenfelder. Our patient, he didn't respond very much at all. He most, the, his daughter and niece mostly led the interview. He would just chime in sometimes with yeah or oh yeah or no, stuff like that. Uh, but, I mean, we kind of got the interview from there and learned that he was a singer in a gospel quartet that mostly sang at funerals and stuff. So we took a look. We found some of the nice traditional Methodist hymns. He was a Methodist down Hitchcock, I believe. And we playing the songs for him. And we actually had a decent conversation today. He was, that was probably the first time I'd heard him speak a complete sentence even. It was just amazing the turnaround he had. Even first song we played for him was "Amazing Grace" and he just started singing along, really. It was an amazing transformation he had. Absolutely stunning.
He was still singing when I came here tonight. We did, and, um, when the project first started, we, um, selected the residents, the, our interdisciplinary team came up with which residents at different levels of dementia. And, um, then we did work with their families. We, you know, we went through privacy concerns with all of the, um, regulations with all the students and, um, and with the families. They were all in agreement of it. They were thrilled with the idea that their resident was gonna be selected. Um, anyway, and they helped us, um, come up with, with some of the music or the types of music that the residents like and then we turned all that over to the students. Um, we did have a staff member with the students on the first visits, um, just to make sure everyone was comfortable and, um, but now the last, the visits today and on the weekend, they've been working alone and I think it's going great. And, um, the, the response has been amazing. We're, we're definitely gonna move forward as a facility to keep, to keep going with this project on our own, hoping that, you know, we'll still get some involvement from students moving forward. But if not, it, it was a great start for us and we, we just could not be more pleased that, um, Mrs. Peterson and these honors students took this project on. So.
I do have, um, I do have video of one of the residents getting her MP3 for the first time today, so if I can indulge you for about two minutes, um, and hopefully get it to play. I think I saw something on it. We gotta figure it out, Mary.
Yeah, we forgot "How Great Thou Art," "Amazing Grace."
So they put on "How Great Thou Art." "How Great Thou Art?"
Yeah.
And "Amazing Grace" is on there?
Holy, holy, holy.
"Greatness" like faithfulness? "Holy, holy, holy."
"Amazing Grace."
Is on there?
Mary can't hear.
Oh, that's that, that's that.
Yeah, so. I think they've always been a pair.
And here's so cute, I just didn't.
But now I am gone. Everybody, but now I see. Set on my heart to spread. Now I see you. I am now lonely. But then, then see. See now I'm tired. See.
Tells it all.
Yeah.
Made a difference in that lady's life.
Yeah, it has. And I, you may not be able to see, Allison was crying. I took a picture of her because she was one of my students. She was just crying and so that has been our project this year and I really wanted you to see that. And I wanted you to see these amazing kids who were brave enough to tackle this, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much. It's a wonderful report and wonderful, uh, project you've been taking on.
Thank you.
As you, as you leave, for those who wonder what terms like authentic learning mean, that's an example of authentic learning. So that's just unbelievable.
Thank you. Well, uh, continue on with the agenda. Our next report is the superintendent's report.
Now, that's tough.
Yeah.
Follow that powerful presentation by trying to speak next, but I'll run through a couple of things here and again, that was just unbelievable. Now, for the benefit of the, um, audience and particularly the audience that follows us on media, um, the board is going into a couple of meetings now in June for their, um, goals. And I think it's worthy to explain to the public how that works. It's a cycle that goes all through the year. We've actually visited with other schools about how we do this and, uh, I believe it's a, a model that's being replicated by other schools and some of it goes back as, as much as, uh, as twenty-some years that, uh, many parts of this were brought in with, uh, Dr. Ziderkoff and a very progressive Board of Education at that time. But the board sets goals in, uh, the middle of the summer. The administrators come in and visit with the board about what those goals are gonna look like. The administrators spend the year with their staff carrying out the goals. And then it comes full circle so that the first meeting in June, when the regular board meeting is concluded, then the, um, the board will hear from each administrator on how they've done this year on the goals that the board set and the goals the administrators set as a result of those. Just a little bit of a change in format this year and it's actually, um, causing some, uh, energy to be spent to see if we can pull it off. The, uh, board officers have asked us to change the format a little bit and go from where each administrator does their report around the room to a situation where we will have the board's goals up and all administrators that applied something in the first goal, we'll talk about that goal. And then the second part and the third part. So that as you go through your reports, uh, three weeks from tonight, as we go through that process, um, you will learn everything that has been done concerning the reading goal and then everything that's been done concerning the mathematics goal. Everything that's been done concerning community outreach. So it's gonna be reformulated. Officers, if I described that wrong, uh, Sherry is leading the cabinet with the heavy lifting to put it together that way, so did I describe it as you asked? That's what we're gonna try to do, right, Sherry? So that should be an interesting process. And then two weeks later, the board will come together and review those goals. Many goals sustain themselves year after year because they're universal and other goals are particular. I mean, the, the board spent a lot of time on, uh, facility goals a few years ago and now that has, um, has been reached in to a great extent. And so now they're moving into a long-term maintenance as well as the learning goals, which perpetuate themselves from years to years. So I just, I think it's important for the community to know that, uh, the Board of Education spends a lot of time visioning what they want their schools to look like and their students to be able to do. And if any of the five board members have anything on that goals process that they'd like the public to know, I'll yield for a second, but I just wanted them to know we're going into the heavy part of that season. Anything? Okay. Second one is just a professional courtesy to let people know that on July one, the day after school ends, is when summer hours will start for our, um, central administration and the high school and the middle school. Uh, the synopsis of the hours is that we're open from seven thirty in the morning until four in the afternoon. There are times when an office closes because people in that office happen to be taking their vacation and we will try to make sure that we post those, uh, times. Um, but, but, uh, full services do take place. We just end a half an hour early by starting as early as seven if the, if the staff members wanna take an hour at lunch or seven thirty to four if they wanna go thirty minutes at lunch. But those start on July one as far as meeting the needs of the public during the summer. And then I thought I would share, uh, just briefly what happens next in the evaluation process. Principals right now have been working very hard with cabinet and with their teachers to get their SLO reports together on how the students have met the learning objectives for the year. And then in June, uh, each of the principals spend somewhere between three and four hours with me. It's a long marathon session where we go through each of the teacher's goals and try to look at trends. And so how, how, what is the trend over the last three years? How much of it can carry over from year to year? And so, uh, the principal's evaluation ties together all the things that their teachers are doing to try to improve learning in their district. And those are things that don't, um, don't meet headlines, but they, they cause just a great deal of work and hopefully they affect student learning. And so I think it's important to state publicly what the board knows goes on and is aware of and, and that's what will be taking place now as we get into June. Now, the final thing I have, I could've put it on the thank yous. I didn't know where to put it, but I wanna share with you really an uplifting, uh, moment from this last week. We just honored, uh, Tricia Wehrman. You were all there when we honored her as one of the classified employees of the year. Well, little did we know that within a day or two of that, we had a child choking in the, um, lunchroom of the elementary center where she works. And she successfully performed the analog remover, uh, maneuver and freed the airway of the child and, uh, what could've been a tragedy became, uh, just another day of taking care of kids. And so I just wanted to uplift, people have training, training pays off and we don't make headlines and that's good. That's a, that's a good thing. And so I just wanted to uplift that and I asked Tricia if I could have permission to share that tonight. So it's been quite a night of reports. Mr. Chairman?
It has. Thank you. Are there any questions for our superintendent? Seeing none, we'll move on. That concludes the report section, uh, which we did have a lot of good reports tonight and, uh, thankfully our business section is pretty light. Uh, under old business, we have a first reading on the high school library, library media center policy and procedure manual. And.
Dawn went into great detail with you folks before explaining all of that and I, I have no hesitance, so it's wherever you wanna go, Mr. Chair.
And so that is on today for our first reading. It'll be on today for a second reading in, uh, at the next meeting in June. So are there any questions or concerns, discussion on the library media center policy and procedure manual?
I, I'm just gonna have that first page that, uh, that shows the changes is very helpful. So that's easy to follow what was changed and what was, what's new and what's been added.
Thank you very much and I think the administrators out here would confirm that we're requesting that on all of the handbooks now as they are turned in in the, in the coming days, that that front page is a maneuver. And I have publicly thanked the board for insight on things before. I wish I'd've thought of that in all the years that I was, that I was principal. Never once did I put a cover on that said, this is what was changed this year. Would've actually been easier for the administrator because you just write the notes as you change it and then that gets into a finished product. So that's a, that's a great suggestion that came from the folks who serve on the board.
Okay, well, if there are no other comments or questions about that manual, that we'll lay over then till our next meeting for second reading and, uh, action. And then our last item of business is the South Dakota Transportation Procedures for Students in Foster Care. And I guess I'll ask the superintendent to comment on this.
Okay, this comes from the Department of Social Services and if I, memory serving me right, I've actually already signed the agreement that just called for a superintendent's signature acknowledging that this relationship takes place. And, um, I'll try to be succinct in describing what their, what the goal of, of this whole, um, initiative is. Foster children go through a great deal of trauma in their lives by the fact that they are in situations that call for foster care. So what, um, the Department of Social Services is trying to do is eliminate, to whatever extent possible, interruptions in that child's regular life. And so one of the things they'll try to do is place the students in foster care close enough so that they can maintain the same school relationship that they already have. If we were a school of, uh, several grade schools like the other towns our size, we would be agreeing that we would be providing transportation to get that child back to Jefferson if Jefferson was where their friends and their teachers and their base were involved. Because we are grade level schools, it does not apply to us in the district level accommodations because if they're here, we'll, we will, um, make sure they stay with their same teacher and their. their same support staff because their building does not change no matter where they're at in the district. Where our district needs to be in tune is with our neighboring schools. And so let's say that we had a child, we can go either direction, but let's say we had a child in the Woonsocket School District who was put in foster care in the Huron School District, but the Department of Social Services worked with both districts and determined that it was still possible for them to attend in Woonsocket where their, where their teacher and their friends were. Then what we're agreeing to do is be as innovative as we can to cooperate with getting that child there. So it might be something like, might be something like they would get on an early bus here in the morning and go to Alpena because we pick up students in Alpena and then they might meet us in Alpena to get the child to their original school, least disruption as possible. If that needs to happen and there is disruption which costs the district money, then the Department of Social Services is supposed to pick up the bill for that. So what they're asking us to do is work with our neighboring schools as much as possible to keep foster children in the setting that they were in, school-wise, counselor, community support, irregardless of where they have to place them in the, in the area in order for them to have foster care. Kelly, if I missed anything, open it up to that. So that's what we, that's what we've basically signed on, that we will be a player to do the best that we can to keep that, keep their disruptions to a minimum. I don't think it calls for board action.
Does it not require board action or is this just a report or?
I think that it's something that we just have and the, and your superintendent signs off on it to acknowledge it, we wanted the board to be aware of what was going on and the public to be aware.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. I know very little about how this process works on child placement. I mean, I assume they typically try to keep the child somewhere close to where they originally lived, but is there a distance as to how far a child could be, say, taken away from Huron and how far they could be placed somewhere? I, I just didn't know. I don't know if anybody here does know.
I actually studied this fairly well. The options on the second to last page, just before the funding, the last full page is what it is. It says, multiple factors will be considered and addressed when determining transportation options for the students, including safety for the student and others being transported, the student's age, the length of the commute and the distance. Information from the social services transportation designee about these factors will be provided so that the plan will be in the best interest of the child and include consideration of cost-effective measures. So I'll read just a little bit of this. Existing transportation can be modified with an existing bus route used, an existing bus route modified slightly, or specialized transportation says it's school district car, public transportation. The CPS worker will also explore options outside of these provided by the district such as reimbursing foster parents for transportation costs and including transport in context with licensed child placing agencies or groups. I believe each thing will, each, I'm going to use the right words. Each instance, each situation will call for them to make a judgment call. I don't think they can have a child on a bus for an hour and a half.
Sure, I was just throwing out an example like if a Huron kid was placed in foster care, say in Brookings.
Right.
I, and I don't know if they do that as part of their normal process.
I just believe there would become a point where they would not see it in the best interest of the child.
See it as feasible, then, sure.
And I can just respond to that is because I'm involved in that system sometimes as an attorney and the DSS always tries to keep, the first goal is always try and keep a child in a family or with family members. And usually they will do whatever they can to keep that child with a family contact and so, but they'll also consider things like school and placement and what foster families are available. And so there's no mileage limit. And so wherever DSS or a court places a child, whatever is in their best interest is the ultimate standard. And so they'll try and find the best option for them. But if, maybe if grandma in Brookings is the best option, they might do that. But they will typically, I think, try and keep them more local.
I worked in the foster care system for a while as a foster care pair many years ago and I know that there is always a, it's always a shortage, you know, and sometimes houses will be full and need, need is there and sometimes they'll have to go outside of the area somewhat, you know? That's just, just the way it works sometimes. But they, I believe they also certainly try to keep them as close as possible. But there are needs that would happen like that where you could have somebody like the superintendent, you know, talked about in Woonsocket that might be placed in Huron because there might not be, be available anybody in the Woonsocket area that can, you know, take care of the foster care needs.
Any other questions or comments on that item? Seeing none, then we will just take that as a report for the board and we won't take any action on it. With that, that completes our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So motion to second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries.